Just me, I want you to say. Oh, here it is, here it is, here it is, here it is. Got it. Okay. Is that right? Okay, we're good? Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, bye-bye.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of District Heights work session. Tuesday, January the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. This meeting has been called to order and it is seven oh four P M. And I'm there simply about. So you have the agenda in front of you. And you have a chance to review this.
Pass the moment to the amendment to the general thing.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to add the. Post session to discuss the charge tonight.
Okay.
So could I make a motion to accept the amendment and consider a post session. The charge.
Hi, Commissioner, I'd like to. My man, the agenda to include a post pension or semi-age. Could I get a stat?
Mr. Commissioner, let's say motion.
All in great. Most comparisons towards. So next we have a presentation. Dr. Dula from Veterans Affairs. Welcome, Dr. Dula.
Thank you.
And happy new year. So you come right on up to me. Want us to.
Very much thank you, my members of council. My parents would be here this afternoon and evening with you. Um, maybe to our present session. I often say it's a great day to be out there in Prince George's County. And there really means. For the month this year, we have been finishing with doing. And how we're affecting the senior community. We're called veterans and a few of veterans of our race this year. Twenty twenty-four, we've got pretty much done as year of the seniors, year one in veterans. So we highlight a few things that we're going to be doing. Health and Human Services. I used to serve as under county executive when I was. That's the health and human service of these get. Job was help around welfare. And all of the veteran affair. My mission is the same for Prince George's County. Help around welfare. And so this time we've created a model that is very popular throughout the United States as other than coffee and bottle known as help with hope. Help with hope. Under that agenda, we covered such things as health, housing and homelessness. We also under E, we covered education and and employment. L is for labor and skill development. P is for people's quality of life. And that is where we place the Veterans Disability Program. We have many, many veterans in Prince George's County who see VA disability. They don't know where to turn, how to get there. And unfortunately, many of them are seniors and like myself, they're Vietnam veterans. And benefits for them have been long overdue. It was not until last year that President Biden signed the PAC Act, that's P A C T Act, ACT. Like myself, for many years, we had been denied our benefits because we are all public agent armed. And Agent Armed is one of the leading killers of male veterans and African-American males in the United States today. You have heard recently, Dr. King signed Dexter as the way for prostate cancer. Uh, we've also heard of other prominent figures in America that have suffered the ill effect of prostate cancer. I too prostate cancer. Not veteran. And I did not see my benefits until the PAC Act sign. Uh, so as we move forward, prostate cancer is at the top of our agenda for twenty twenty-four because we understand that so many are not getting their exams. Many seniors in their sixes and seventies have not been, uh, have not taken advantage of their early exams. Uh, so we suggest that everybody over forty years old, every male over forty years old, please get your prostate checked because it's a sign of children. And we want to be around for a long time. So we're really emphasizing that. And last year, we held a special event where we hosted males to come in with their families and to go through our screening process. And we threw blood on sight and the cause of it, some of the senior males who did not had their prostate, the PSA, the children prostate, found out that they had prostate cancer. So it's those types of events that we're going to continue in twenty twenty-four. Uh, also suicide awareness and prevention is at the top of our agenda. Uh, we don't want people to feel like there's no hope, that there's nowhere to turn. And many of the veterans I've talked to every day are from the Iraqi, Afghan and Vietnam wars. Uh, and they come home and they have suffered from post-traumatic stress disorder, B T S. And once again, they didn't know who to turn to and how to get treatment. So we've been very happy to really work with our senior veterans to make sure that they understand it. They only have to make one phone call and that's to all of the Veterans Affairs. And then whoever calls, they're going to get the treatment that they deserve. And it's all for so for surviving spouses. I created this survivor spouse program so that those surviving spouses who have lost their loved ones would be able to get the help they need and receive benefits that they're entitled to. Benefits like the D I C, independent indemnity compensation. So that they might be eligible and receive that compensation after they lost their loved ones. And that's an additional approximately thirteen hundred dollars a month. And many of them that called me and say, I need help. No one had explained it to them. And those that did call said, I need help to pay my rent, my life, my mortgage. And we helped them get through the entire process. How do we do that? With partnerships. We partner with the D A V, the State of American Veterans Organization. We partner with the American Legion and we partner with others to make sure we spread the word and let them know that we're here to help. And they don't have to do the paperwork because the organization threw it on them. And they submitted to VA so that they might be able to get help. We're also getting many calls now from our seniors, their loved ones, their spouses, their children, their grandchildren, talking about Alzheimer's and dementia. So we created a caregiving program. Like the lady that I'm working with right now, that called yesterday and said, my husband has Alzheimer. He's a roamer, you know, a roamer that get up and walks, he don't sleep at night, he just walk. And he needs special care. And so we're helping her navigate this process between Medicaid and Medicare and VA to make sure that he gets the help that she needs. Uh, but those are some of the things that we do because also veteran affairs is here to help. And especially our senior community because we understand they've earned the right to be able to have those benefits. One thing we are adding to the agenda this year, cybersecurity. Cyber security is a big deal. Our seniors are being taken advantage of. They're losing millions right here in Prince George's County. And we are working with the Prince George's County Police Department to make sure that we get the word out about cybersecurity. I spoke about education earlier under the Health with Hope program. Education means that we have done our homework because I had to learn just like many other people I have to learn. And so what we've done is we've joined partnerships with the police department and with others. Some are veterans ministers to make sure that we spread the word that there's things that our seniors most certainly have to look out for because most of the seniors are like me. We started out with a quarter and a phone booth. We started out with word process to typewriters. I often tell young people, I started out in the military on a manual typewriter in the middle of a muddy field. Uh, and I learned from that. But now we're in the age of technology. And we think that this is absolutely great and we click on things we shouldn't click on. And we answer things that we shouldn't answer. We put our personal, our private information out there when we see a website and says, uh-oh, you've been hacked. Click on this number and it sends you somewhere else where they want to steal your information. Now where is there, it's this, but seniors don't know how it works. So what we ask them to do is if you don't know what the, uh, the website is, do not click on it. Okay? If you're not familiar, don't click on it. Because if you do, it's going to send to you to somewhere where you don't want to be. And never put your personal information out here, your driver's license number. Uh, your social security number. Because these sites look real. So we're saying if Verizon, if it looks like something comes from Verizon and it says, oh, click here, just give us your social security and things of that nature, don't do it. Pick up the phone and call Verizon and ask them is this you? Because we've been very gullible because we just don't know. I was hacked back in twenty sixteen. I was hacked through the VA. And the VA is one of the most hacked organizations in the United States today. They were able to get my social security number. They were able to get my background. They were able to get my rank, my address. And the next thing I knew, I was being extorted. Someone wanted money from me. Or else they said, we're going to put out things to your email address, to your contacts. And so I had to report it to Verizon. And this is what I tell everyone, seniors, report it to, first of all, to your courage. To let them know that you have possibly been hacked. Next thing, call the L C C. Let the L C C know. Let the F T C know. And also let all the credit bureaus know. I didn't know in twenty sixteen to do these things. I didn't know that I could also contact the FBI and it's all online to do these things. I didn't know until last year and somebody said, well, did you do these things? I said, no, nobody told me. And so I had to go back and do all those things. So I tell everybody, the first call you should make to your internet provider, to the, to the Prince George's County Police Department. Because they do an extensive background, I mean, yeah, what you might say, background investigation. And they also go forward. So if someone tries to sue me down the road, they will say, oh, don't sue them because they're already working with us and we're trying to identify uh, who, uh, who hacked their email and has started them. So you must call the Prince George's Police Department. Uh, and, uh, and once I did that, I started seeing things happen. Last year, someone was trying to buy cards and money and for. Every time I turned around, I was getting the email of somebody named Joel. Joel had my rank. He had my social security number, my phone number, the whole nine yards. But I had reported it and froze my accounts with the L C C, the F T C and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, my bank. I put a code word on my bank so no one could go in and pull funds out of my bank. Uh, funding. That happened to one of our commissioners on the commission for veterans right here in Prince George's County. He gets eighteen thousand dollars out of his camp. And he had to really jump through hoops to, uh, to make sure that the banks knew that was not him. And he's still going through some things. This has been about a year now. But make sure that you call that first call you make is your internet provider and to the, to the police here in Prince George's County. They're very helpful. So some of the tips and I'll, um, cover some of the tips that I made up there. Uh, first of all, create a strong password. You know, I didn't know how to change my password. I had to call some of the young folks and say, okay, walk them through this process. Remember, I came from a quarter in a phone booth. So I had to ask them, how do you do it? They walked me through it. But that's the first thing the internet provider will tell you, change your password. Second, do not store credit card information in your email, in your, uh, in your computer. Because if once they hack and they get your password, they can go into your computer and they see every key that you hit. They can get all your information. So I had to do all those. Also avoid phishing. That's where people ask you for questions and, and as they click on here and, and, uh, and, uh, send false websites and things of that nature because they're after your private information. So make sure that whatever you're clicking on, you know what they're doing. Uh, only click on what you know. Only click on what you know. Uh, check, check your bank statements and your credit cards. Once again, don't store those passwords on your, on your emails. I know some folks that were hacked said, well, I also had it stored on my, in my computer so I can remember it. Bad idea. Because if they get into your computer, they can get your bank accounts. And you don't want to do that. Uh, trash your documents. Some people just call up paper and throw it in the trash can. People go through the trash can and they get your information, credit cards, uh, social security numbers. All these things are in the trash can and they go through, I call them, uh, trash can scavengers. Because they're scavengers. And they're going through and looking exactly for the information that you don't want to have. Again, do not click on links that you do not recognize. Uh, that's phishing and that's the easiest way for them to get your information. Backup your important files such as healthcare and other medical records, things of that nature that you want to have. Just in case you are hacked, they can't go in and erase your information. And, uh, and if you have to change something, at least it's backed up. Uh, the young folks can tell you how to do that. They, don't ask me, because they'll walk me through it every time. And to report a missing VA benefits check, you call the VA. That is called, uh, poaching, uh, poaching prevention. Because what happens, like some of us, we are drawing VA benefit checks. And what happens is, uh, they will, uh, you'll get a phone call or you get an email. And they will tell you, open up a trust fund with us. We'll be glad to walk you through the process. And then we click on that whether it's a bank account or a trust fund or whatever it is. But you end up paying a fee for that. And there's organization, you can do it, you can do it yourself. You don't pay a fee. Also, uh, for claims, you'll see lawyers come forward and they say, uh, pay this, uh, pay us and we'll take care of you for your B S O, uh, VA disability claim. You don't need to do that. That's all free. Through Office of Veterans Affairs and our partners, uh, at the D A V and the State Veterans Claims Office and American Legion and, uh, that's all free. Uh, you'll see these TV commercials. Uh, if you were a station accountant gentleman, you drank the water. See those? Okay? Call this number. Well, that's a lawyer trying to get your money. Because you can go to the VA and it doesn't cost you a dime. So instead of giving away ten to twenty percent to a lawyer, that's all yours. So we call that, uh, poaching prevention. And lastly, I'll, uh, say this. We recently had people in, uh, in this area that stole five million dollars worth of your checks through the post office. I think I sent that to some this morning. Whereas people got together and it was an inside job because you had an inside clerk that was able to steal those checks. And then they used a mew, you know what a mew is, somebody carries stuff? They used a mew to take those checks, change the amounts, the way we give with them. And then to store them into dummy accounts. And then they would pull the money from those dummy accounts. And that was five million dollars worth right there. Fortunately, they were caught. But guess what? Did you need the check, your bank statements to make sure, and your credit cards to make sure you weren't affected? Because that was done right here in Washington DC area for them justice. And so it's happening all around. So my, uh, my point is this. More than just helping around welfare and help with hope. Also veteran affairs, we're trying to make sure that we spread the word that we all have to be aware, be conscious and be careful. Because there are those out here that will steal your identity in a heartbeat. You're getting better at it. And if the Prince George's Police Department, this year calling to you tonight, the first thing would say, they would say is, you're getting better at it and you're staying one step ahead of the investigative, uh, organizations, police departments. So be vigilant. Take care of, uh, your personal information. I D T F is real. And if you know someone that's been hacked, make sure you tell them the process that I've told you about tonight. Okay? Make that very important phone call. And if you miss a check, tell your neighbors to call one eight hundred eight two seven one thousand. If you miss a disability check, make sure you call one eight hundred eight two seven one thousand. Because many come through the mail. Mine goes straight to the bank. Some people still get them because they don't trust the bank. So we have to make sure that we go out and tell our neighbors, uh, the things that I've told you tonight. And I would love to work with the senior community here in District, I love District Heights. Yeah, dedicated the veterans' work. I would say to the company, say it before they complete it. I've been back several times and anytime you call, come. Because we serve the largest number of veterans in the state of Maryland right here. Although that's more than sixty thousand veterans, I'm responsible for a big achievement. Because everyone has someone in the family that's a veteran and I get those calls every day. So a lot of people don't know what we do. Please share the word that we're here for them because we'd like for that information to get out. And I know that my student, see Anthony Timlin up here, I taught him in high school. You want to know what he was like? Oh, just come see me. I want to feel the game. He was an excellent student. Uh, because he had his head on the line and I knew he was going to win. And so I'm very proud of him today. Any questions I can ask? I just, I want to do you a phone number? Yes, my phone number. Mm-hmm. My phone number is three zero one nine five two three nine zero four. That's three zero one nine five two three nine zero four. And my email is J A, last name Dula, U L A Y L people, love to give me two L's, but I'm a man. At C O dot P G dot M D dot U S. So that's J A Dula at C O dot P G dot M D dot U S. And I often tell people, we're very busy, uh, because we also have a survivor spouse program. We have a suicide program. We have a new mentoring program. Uh, we just started a foster care program so that those, uh, kids when they, that are juniors and seniors, when they get ready to age out and they're thinking about joining the military, give us a call. Because we'll guide them through the process. Let me, let me tell you about this too. Uh, many of them can't pass the Armed Forces Qualification Exam. It's called the ASL A F Q T. And so we got a call from recruiters and the junior R O T C in, right here in Prince George's County. And they looked at me and they said, well, you work for county executive, my boss is Angela also Brooks. And said, what, what's she going to do about? And I said, well, you talk to her right now. And, uh, so I got with the memorial library system. Because we want our children to be able to compete and join the military if they like. I think the lowest score is Army in twenty-five, but the highest score is Air Force in about thirty-five, thirty-six points. And they couldn't reach it, but we wanted to go in the Air Force. So I got with the memorial library system and what we did, we said, create a program. Give us something that our kids can elevate their score and be able to join. Because I had one mother calling and said, my child scored five, but wants to go in the Air Force. Five to thirty-five, that's a big jump. So, uh, so, uh, we, uh, created a new program. That program, uh, was called, uh, uh, the ASL A F Q T qualification test. And what it means is that we created a program to wear through the memorial library system. Uh, students who would like to enter the military and can't score high in them and, and go into a software program. And they can test at home as much as they want to, up to six months. And if they don't have a computer, the memorial library system will loan them a computer up to six months. So they can pre-test at home as much as they want to. And if they can't raise their score because maybe they're not very good at math, I was terrible at math. I, I became a commissioned officer in the military, but I had to take extra math classes to get high scores. So I know how hard it is. And, uh, so if they can't pass science or grammar or whatever, we have a system where they can get a tutor free. It's a free tutor. And they can access in twenty-four hours a day. And so through that program, they raise their scores, then they can get in the military. That mother that I told you about that said, my son scored a five, but he had to score thirty-five. He didn't score thirty-five. But he scored a thirty-four. Which now he's in the United States Navy. So the program works. ASL A F Q T memorial library system, test as much as you want at home. We'll get you a free tutor. They have to get through the run spots and you'll be able to pass, get in the military. And that's why we're also extending to our foster care kids who think that they want to go into the military. And we're working with the quarter appointed, uh, advocate, Kasan, to make sure that we trust those kids who want to go into the military, juniors and seniors. And so that's a brand new program we have and we're looking forward to have them, uh, move forward too. So what happens, seniors were hurt, what happened to everyday senior citizens? We created the Warm Hearts Call List. What's the Warm Heart Call List? The Warm Hearts Call List is a program that I created to touch those seniors who are veterans, the disabled, who are sick, shut in and disabled, that they're, they're homebound. So I have a person that calls every day to the Warm Hearts Call List seniors and disabled to talk to them and they tell us things like, I don't know, grandma, get my head to me over, I need food. So we've worked with Ernest Platon and Family Services and others to make sure that they get a warm in. We also make sure that, uh, if they have any distress or they're depressed, whatever, we talk to them. So that they feel better. The only bad thing is we're just getting off the phone and you're going to be on the phone about. They want, they want you to call every veteran. I'm going to stand here right here in District Heights. I'm going to make sure that we're working with you. Your foster care, with your seniors, your homebound who are sick and shut in. And those veterans that get out of military and say, I don't know if you live in the lovely city of Orlando, but I need a job. We're here. I get job announcing from the Congress Department, the state, from the county, I get up and go over there. So anyway, uh, those are some of the things we're doing and, uh, and I could talk more. But if you have any questions or concerns you don't want to ask tonight, you have my phone number, please get me a call. That's what we're here for.
It comes fast.
Thank you for the information you sent out this morning about the scams, the scammers out there. I wanted to make sure that it was okay that we, we were, uh, if we would post that on our website.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, that, uh, came from me through the, um, through the VA. And what I do is, uh, and I'll include, um, future, uh, uh, information that I send out. I send out things daily because I did create an advisory council. With the Heights might want to point someone to be on our advisory council and also veteran affairs. And also help the, uh, the economy. So we, I send that out daily. Pivots of information. But yes, you.
So I think, um, we were, uh, thinking about, um, kind of opening, um, Kind of opening a veterans committee. We do have one here in the Incorporated City. But I think it would be nice if we kind of went on the outskirts a little bit. To invite veterans to be a part of our veterans committee. So I want you to do a call to action for folks to, you know, join us. I mean, I think it's important, but we have so much that we want to offer our veterans. If you just, I mean, like residents, period. So we definitely want to have you come back. We want to sit down and talk about our partnership. Being here, Veterans Resource Day, or whatever we want to call it. We want you here. Because everything sounds amazing. And we want to give you that support too. So just think of us as this second office. But we would definitely be in, with you, but in. Any other questions?
First of all, thank you for your service. You know, you had extraordinary life because of the way this is happening. And thank you for your education. You know, you was my African American history teacher, something that's really, doesn't even need talking about. So I appreciate you for that education that you provided me. And also that mentorship. You know, you've been a great mentor to me, so. Thank you so much. You know, of course, one suggestion that we offer is our senior building. That's open to this balance activity. So you know, your tips today help us out with something that we should be adding to our senior building. And just supporting those wraparound services that we also have. So I hope you take notes for that.
I can say that we look forward to working with you. County Executive also Brooks, when she pulled me out of retirement to do this. Said that my role was to serve the veterans community according to their needs. And you can't serve the needs of any community if you're not in the community. And I took my philosophy from when I was commander in the Air Force. To be out amongst the people, to learn what the people needed, so that we can provide, satisfy those needs. And so we'll be happy to work with you along the way and part of meeting with you further. And the rating of Rome this. We have created church ministry partnerships all throughout Prince George's County. And nonprofit community partnerships. And as I said, if you'd like to appoint someone to serve online veterans council, I would love it. Thank you. Stay that same. Thank you.
Thank you. Access information items. So we have the city committee and volunteer group discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, staff, residents. I won't leave before you all. My name is Star Jefferson, I'm the city clerk. And one of my main functions as the clerk is to support our city committees as they are. And in their efforts to support the commission. This item is before you to address some clarification in some of the committees that we have that have been approved by the commission. At different points of time for the history of the city. I will point out that. The city code addresses four committees in section eleven oh five. It talks about the Board of Supervisors of Elections. It talks about the Health and Sanitation Committee, which is inactive at the moment. It talks about the Ethics Commission, which is active. And then it talks about temporary committees. And an example of the temporary committee might be considered by the weekly website. The goal of this item before you is to flesh out the charge that you have with the various committees. So that in table one, if you'll notice there, it addresses the, it lists out the various committees. So we have Bose, Ethics, Charter, Sustainability, Citizens, Veterans, Decorating, and the Community Garden. Further in the reported, you already see it. We talk about the differences in advisory boards versus volunteer groups. And my question for you all to ponder is to give a bit of direction to myself and staff to. Organize them in such a fashion, so that we can stand them up effectively, efficiently. Advisory boards are extensions of the commission. And they are required to have their agenda. They're required to submit meeting minutes. They're required to adhere to Open Meetings Act or Clarification. Also to adhere to Robert's rules of order in their meetings. They're also undergoing required ethics training and Open Meetings Act training as well. So I just wanted to present that for you all to possibly go forward in giving some direction on. Which committee, what the charge of these committees would be. And if there's going to be any editing or change in that direction. The purpose and function from volunteer committees versus advisory boards is discussed, as well as decision making authority. In table two, I give a sample for a possible. Reallocation of some of the committees, if possible. And also a adjustment to some of their titles. So for instance, we have the Ethics Commission. And we have the Charter Committee and the Sustainability Committee. The Sustainability Committee and the Charter Committee could possibly be commissions as well. That way that they're uniform and they're approached. They're also, with the advisory bodies, required to have bylaws. So that's another major requirement of the advisory boards. And we possibly don't want to unduly burden some of our volunteer groups with some of the more arduous tasks of providing. Regular meeting minutes, agendas, bylaws, and so forth and so on.
Any questions from the admission?
There's kind of comments. I'm not going to come in. David.
Sir.
Yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And we actually talked about. Changing the title of the Decorating Committee. Since we're going to be the city's ones that are taking care of that. And changing them to Arts and.
So this has been a brilliant conversation with beautifying the city as well as engaging in. Art placements in the city's right of way. And so conceptually, what you could consider is taking the skills and expertise that already exists in the decorating committee. AKA, a group of people who are community minded and beautification minded. And want to enhance the living experience for their residents. And take that up a next level to say, okay, decorating committee, instead of just focusing on holiday decorations. You could instead focus on art in public places. That could include holiday celebrations, but that could also include art installations on public, publicly on land.
So that's. Yeah, because one thing that we don't do, and I think that it's important to show. That a community is growing, not simply an idea of. You know, that we're claiming all of this stuff, but that we, like, public art is a sign that your community is growing in a more positive, in a more enlightened direction. And I think that when we look at our numbers, when we presented the last budget, we can just see the numbers of the residents that come in. That that is something that more established communities want. And even those that, when you put public art installations into a community, it creates another level of city pride. And so we move into beautification where that lie down, here on that. It's amazing. And so what we're going to see in the spring. With American blowers coming, we're going to have new rankings and all those things. And so what I'm thinking about some of these other established communities, they're going to stay in public. So we should be able to replicate that too.
Absolutely. I agree with you. I think that's a great, and that's exactly the direction that I'm seeking for you all is to, as we redefine them. And create, some of these committees don't have the original charge for why they were developed.
Yes.
And to give them direction. So I would love to flesh that out with you a little bit more detail. And certainly give that a, give that the proper parameters and move forward with. Including that committee, you know, as a popular arts commission or with the charge of the public beautification, different parts, art aspects. But I agree with you very much. I think that that's what is needed, is the direction of which direction you all want this commission.
So are there Arts and Beautification Committee? Well, we could play around with it. But so now that you have an idea of. What the community should be operating on, so are you prepared?
Yes. Yes, I will certainly come up with a, for each of the committees' commissions. And we'll get your input on what you would like to see, that they're focused and charged. And if it's going to be an advisory board, such as the, that would be a great advisory board, I think the arts, whatever the time.
Might be.
I guess. So some of these things we want to. One thing that we have to consider is when we look at our committees. It's harder for us to get new people there to be with us. So I think if we took it down a notch for some of these new things that we want to do on advisory boards, they come together. They get the permission ideas. We execute, and then they get this band until we call again. Right? And that would be a good place where people can say, once they see a piece of artwork. Go up on the grounds, and then we say, okay, we got some money. Let's put something else in another spot. They can go identify the spot where the installation would best be suited. And then we can, and they can give us an idea of basically historical context of the city. Or the future of where we want to take this city. And we can incorporate those things. But I would like to see a nice, large public installations around the city. And that would satisfy.
I think that that would be a really impactful, I think that would be, hopefully, a great response. I mean, obviously, we're open to recruit for people to participate. But I think that hopefully that would draw interest, because that's a, you know, that's a, it's a great. Not just support, it's a great opportunity for the city to be reflective of culture, people, and ideas. I think that's a well, the growth.
Yes, yes.
And then sending you guys the sustainability bylaws.
Yes, ma'am.
One, is this the complete list of the committees?
On table two. Or table one, actually, both tables are going to reflect all the committees that I've been made aware of. Been communicating with in the last year or so. And there are some, for instance, gaps that are a little nuanced. That don't necessarily fall squarely into an advisory board or volunteer group that I would also. Would like the direction on as well, to make sure that that relationship is. You know, supported and taken to, you know, escape the charge of your duty.
Because there's, I think, the senior center committee. They just recently, over the last, I'll say, three or four months, started to meet again on that floor. If we're going to continue to meet, but I didn't know whether or not you had that on the radio.
I didn't, but I can certainly add them, I wouldn't. Like.
We can read it.
Okay.
Because we do have some revision. Committee members for the senior citizens bill. So we do make sure you recognize and keep that.
So I'm looking at table two, and I do agree. For the list of advisory bodies and the city volunteer groups. I think it'd be really useful for us to define what we're really looking for, especially with an advisory board. Because you're always talking about, you know, resident led initiatives. We, you know, we can't do everything, staff included. So it would be really helpful to us as a community to tap into our residents' expertise on their interest areas. To that, I know this advisory board category does come with some startup, right? Getting a. I'm sorry. What are we looking at for the sustainability, the bylaws? I think so. A couple of things that need to be sort of stood up. So I'm wondering if we can provide some support to those committees that we will be turning into advisory boards. I'm specifically have some longer standing committees who may not be familiar with some of the processes that we have. Just want to make sure that we provide that support to them as we stand these up.
Yes, ma'am. That's the second item I'll be up before, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And Sustainability, we have an amazing.
Yes. I'm sure we can send.
That's exactly.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Everything should be uniform. It's just.
Yes.
Distinction. So as we talk about establishing advisory boards and committees. One of the pieces that Ms. Jefferson alluded to, but you do need to dedicate some time and thought to before you make decisions is. Do you want to subject a given board or committee to being essentially a public body, right? And then everything that goes with that, with respect to the. So it's a question of, are you establishing a public body that's advisory to the commission? Or are you looking at more of a volunteer group that's working with departments and staff? And so the only thing I would throw out there is for many of these bodies, we already know that meeting those. Those bars for Open Meetings Act can be a challenge and requires a lot of support and training. And so that is one element that we do need to hone in on for each one. That will then inform the work that Ms. Jefferson brings back to you.
Yes.
Well, did you want to?
Sure, I can roll on into the next item that I'm here for. And the next item is, this is, I'm not sure if I'll mention this a moment ago, is. The review and inspection of the sustainability bylaws. And this came before you last year. But it was never formally presented for approval. To receive your approval on that. And the reason that I'm bringing it back at this point in time is because I want you all to spend a little time reviewing their bylaws. Because once you approve them, a hundredth approval, it will be the basic template that we use to roll out to the other committees. They are thorough, they're depressionally done, and pretty much hit most of the markers. Some of them, well, some of the items might not apply to every committee, but the overall contact context is there. So we wanted to put them before you to review the next couple of weeks before the next work session. And so that they can come before you for approval. So that you can review them, make any edits, changes, and then I can have the opportunity to present them to Mr. Farrar. And make sure that we're all fifty of them before we roll them out.
Sure.
Thank you, Star. I did take a look at the bylaws and just my brief review. I did have a question or a comment on Article two, no, excuse me, Article three. Nine on audit.
Yep.
So it just reads the committee shall undergo. So it just reads the committee shall undergo an audit of its financial records by independent auditor as selected by the committee members. So definitely, I think we should go ahead and do an audit. Maybe we can just as a suggestion, standardize that so that maybe like the front office does audits for all of the committees. And that's just something that's a standard procedure across all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 Expenses would be for an audit. Because they will.
So that's a little bit of duplicative language. Any expenditures that we make as an offshoot of committee work are city expenditures.
Right.
And so what we've done since you started working, your procurement work, finished work, has brought all of those expenditures in-house. And so I think that language is more of a vestige of individual groups having specific funds set aside for them and the city not exercising a part of their side over the funds. Whereas, and so any expenditures associated with committee or commission will get wrapped up into our annual audit. That said, we also do assign department staff to support track expenditures related to individual committees. For example, public work supports the sustainability. Public work also supports the Fiesta Gardens, and they track expenditures and help them deal with the procurement processes so that, you know, they can get what they need to deliver, tell them they need to.
Other questions? Did you want to continue?
No, I think I'm all done, but yes, and thank you much, Ms. Jefferson. Make edits to them, to take your opinions, to take your suggestions, and we'll submit them before you for approval either way.
Sure. Any questions? Sure. So in regards to, like, I guess, like, the cap, are you going to kind of refer to them on what they kind of want to do, like, which part of that type of structure are they going to send? I think that was kind of way up, you know, right?
It is, cap is a different entity or group. They function independently in summer with our support and the police department's support. My goal is to work with Mr. Fisher, getting his goals and objectives and presenting that to you all to make sure that that is inclusive and be aligned with your goals and objectives as a commission. And to take your direction from there.
I have a vice chair here, so. Talk to him. You're still a secretary, though.
Yes.
But you know, it's a my own. But we appreciate you all. There you go. Thank you, Star.
Actually, the question may not be one that Ms. Jefferson can answer, but the two members of the caps, Turner and Waters, another committee that I didn't see noted, but I'm not sure if it ought to be noted, that goes hand in hand with caps, is the Coalition. Is that something that is still, that is still ongoing?
Is it?
Is? It is, yeah. What's the proper thing? It's the kind of Mr. Curry's civic coalition. So it's combined, always moving the line they use to. No, I made some other time.
Just make sure you connect with Star.
Yeah.
I think Ms. Fisher put it on before.
Okay.
It was on one of those things.
It's a combined meeting. We used to have separate meetings, but it's a combined.
Thank you.
That was done when the walls, walls was here.
Oh, beautiful, Sam. Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we need to do a motion to forward the city advisory board's committees to the February thirteenth work session flat. But I wish motion.
Okay. I advise the Department of City Commission for the the information items, state advisory bodies and committees. I'm sorry, I'm spouting. I advise the Department of City Commission to move that information item, state advisory bodies and committees to the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, first amendment for that.
Very good. Commissioner, go ahead and say the motion.
Oh, thank you.
Go in there and do that motion for sustainability bylaws to the February thirteenth work session for action.
Yes, I can take that here. As we move that we forward the sustainability committee's bylaws to the February thirteenth work session.
Could I get a second? Commissioner Jaffe, a second motion. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you so much. A lot of information, Star, these committees, they definitely had a handle. None of our volunteers, but we need to have some continuity and a bylaw. So that's just something. So the next agenda item. Public participation. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He has to play, he took his face, he's already told, he's watching. I apologize. I got a big prank and smoke.
Well, we did a survey, the city conducted a survey, we requested one on November twenty. Fiesta Place in Edville, that's a third day, W L Meekins. So we came to find out that Fiesta Place, the city doesn't own it. However, it was abandoned through an equity case. An equity case, and I go into a little bit more further detail as well. That's usually like an abandonment. And so let us, you know, they made a decision, the courts made a decision, and they owned that. However, Edville Drive, we do, the city does, however, we do have some encroachments, which I listed as one. On sixty-six fifteen, sixty-seven oh one Foster Street, sixty-seven hundred Gateway. It explains, it goes into detail about one being Astro Drive, sixty-six fifteen Astro Drive, sixty-seven oh one is an Astro Drive. Gateway Boulevard is a gravel and driveway fence, and we do have infrastructure near the western edge, which goes into more detail into the survey as well. So the fiscal impact, we look for more guidance, the staff will look for more guidance from the commission. And the alternatives would be to negotiate and market sell community development initiatives. And I list those items as well, and we'll go into a little bit of detail. Would you like me to go over?
Sure. Okay.
So. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me on the better?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so I'll start over a little bit, I'll give you like a brief summary of what I just said. Okay.
Excuse me, is there a button on your speaker?
I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was just talking louder, is that better? Okay. So we did a survey on Fiesta Place. We found out that Fiesta Place, we don't own the other side of Fiesta Place. On the other side of Fiesta, we do own Fiesta Gardens, not Fiesta Place, which is the opposite side. Edville Drive, which is the home, however, we have some encroachments. If I list here, I address sixty-six fifteen Foster Street is a driveway. Sixty-seven oh one Foster Street is also a driveway. Sixty-seven hundred is Gateway Boulevard, which is a gravel driveway fence. And it'll go into further detail, that's on the first page, if you're looking for it. So as far as fiscal impact, I'm looking for guidance from the commission on that. The alternative that I did list were to negotiate a market sale, which is to subdivide and sell ourselves, addressing encroachments transparently for revenue. And community development initiatives, which explore projects benefiting city and property owners and enhancing. And the attachments pretty much lists in further detail in reference to the survey and also gives you a aerial imagery, GIS imagery, and also a blueprint. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Yes.
More comments?
Okay.
So just to summarize, the lot across the street from Fiesta Place is what we're referring to.
Yeah.
So right now, what you can see visibly when you're looking across the street of Fiesta Place, it looks like a driveway, there's a couple of cars parked there, but that goes all the way back into.
It's an alleyway.
Right. Yeah, so, right, so that alleyway is private property now. So that is sort of off the table. The Edville Pass Road.
Pass Road, which is.
It's not an alleyway, so it used to be a road.
Yeah.
It used to be a public road that we closed. Was Edville, okay. Yeah, so like Edville that crosses Gateway. Yes, there used to be a public, that road used to continue all the way.
Yeah, all the way through into.
Yeah.
That's not ours.
That's not ours.
Does that stop to free?
Where all those cars are parked.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not ours. But it's not, that's not.
Yeah, so that, now Edville is our public property, it's our public, with some encroachments from some private property owners. Right. So in terms of, you know, it's really unfortunate that we don't have that public property across from Fiesta Place.
Right, that is the portion of our property, because we wanted to extend and process the project that way. And we had, sort of had a plan over our track in our head of what we wanted to do with that extending space to expand our board community. However, we wanted to make sure that we owned that plant first, so we made sure to do our re-dogits, which would be to get a boundary survey to that accurate boundary lines and delineate to be able to delineate the difference.
So, but we still do have Edville, which is a great opportunity for us to use as some point of green space as we have been discussing. We do have some encroachments, so I don't know if the commission remembers, but we had a fence approval that we did probably in the summertime for that house that's right there on Edville and Gate Street. I think it's right there. We approved that fence, and that is actually the fence that is part of the fence that is in progress. So that, and as we can remember, that was a, a new resident, so the city. And so I don't think that resident actually knew that property, that is not actually their property.
So, so what I did, so what I did in one of the surveys, because they're like legal trespassers, however, they made it very aware to the neighbors and to the residents of what we were conducting. Because we had, we had to delineate those lines. And I was able to meet with those residents personally to go to, to, you know, communicate what exactly was being conducted. I let them know that we didn't have any definitive results yet other than to just to get the, entertain the information, and then I would present the information and look for future guidance from our, yeah, government bodies.
So my initial thoughts on this, because this is a new resident and I'm, you know, spending money to put a fence up, and they didn't know, and we didn't know, right? So I, my initial thoughts of that, you know, if we could offer to sell that small portion of the lot to them at a fair price.
That's one of the options.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, you know, because we, you know, we want to be good neighbors, right? And these things happen as we're unhiling and unraveling a lot of these things that we're looking into now, do they could be worthwhile to at least offer them the opportunity to purchase the lot? And we still have so much more space that we can develop as public space.
Many things there. In Detroit, where what they do is they offer the properties next to any of them. Suppose they offer those properties first. You can do different categories, as we can say, you can rent that outside, like, you can green it, you have to close it all. So everything the city can do, but I think that is so far away from.
Back.
From Fiesta Garden, I would rather, I really want to do maximum impact on Fiesta, and then we develop any checkpoints we want to, we want people to walk in. So I don't want all these disparate, disjointed places, because of course, they're more hassle for the police to watch, they're more hassle for us to have to maintain. They expose us to more liability, right? Or any type of injury, anything like that. So I think that we should maybe just consider harnessing it up and offering the neighbors that it abuts to if they want to buy it. I don't, you know, we can, you know, we can go on there, right? So we don't need all the land, because we got some juicy fish.
Yeah.
We don't have to hit, actually, we use that one, the hit one. So, and we need to buy this stuff here.
So. Before we end, any other comments?
Have a quick question.
Well, actually, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, no, just to respond to Vice Mayor's comment. I do see the appeal in selling those lot, or at least offering them to be sold to neighbors for revenue. I also know that we have been talking about having connecting trails throughout the city. And although that's not ideal, because we don't have that space across Fiesta Place, that would give us the opportunity to keep, yeah, have that land to feed that into a connector trail throughout the city. So I would be in favor of where we have encroachments. We offer that for sale, but I would really like, if we could keep that, that's public property.
So we just want to move this way. Okay. I have a couple of questions. One, when you, when the survey was being conducted, I just want to be clear. The actual current where the Fiesta Garden is, that is not owned by the city?
Fiesta Garden currently is owned by.
It's.
Fiesta Place across the street, because we were thinking of the expansion.
I'm with you there. Okay, so the, so all of the space behind Fiesta Garden is, because we got big plans for that space. That all that doesn't go onto the city?
And to be sure that it belongs to the city, but I wouldn't be applying to my tenure. I believe getting. I believe getting surveys done for everything. Since I don't have records of a survey being conducted, I petition to get another survey done, which we are doing, we are possibly completing that first. So, I want to make sure that all of that is ours for certain without question. Information, and I want to see it right in front of me with blueprints. And she especially agreed, because to me, before I start a project, I put my name on a project, I have to make sure that everything is correct.
We appreciate it.
Before I say yes, it is ours, I've been hoping that a hundred percent is ours, but I cannot say certainty until that survey is completed.
Sure. So, while we are pondering that, Commissioner Goldman.
I would answer.
Actually, my, my statement, my comment is, I am in agreement with Vice Mayor and Commissioner Goldman regarding the space at Edfield. I think that it should be sold as well at a very fair price for them. For their homeowner, because they have invested in purchasing a fence, and they are quite hopefully, so.
I would say that the fence isn't purchased yet. It's not, I didn't see a fence. And I surveyed there through the bamboo. I didn't see a fence.
But in this bamboo. So, are we going to?
Go ahead, Mr. Goldman.
So, um, so, let's be clear, Fiesta Place, the city owns that.
Does not.
Does not own, okay. So, I was just kind of clear what I'm talking about. I'm trying to map my head, and so, okay. So, I, I disagree with the whole settlement to the paper. I think we should reach out to them to see if they want it, because you don't even know if they can afford it, you know? So, we should reach out to them to see if they want it first, because I mean, you're saying we sell it to some.
Well, technically, if the city owns it and it's an enclosure, that space was kind of illegally obtained, and that would not be a fairness across all the other residents as well, who we keep those deluding lives for. We want to make sure that we're just fair across the board. And to me, the most fairness would be to have both interests at heart of the city and district heights and the residents as well. So, I figured if we can offer them something at a fair market, very fair market price, we even work with them to whatever the body sees fit. And that would be beneficial for everyone in the city, go this far, that's untaxed, uncharted lands that we had no access to, but technically we own, so.
But how about the final survey? That you did.
The final survey is.
That was my, you know, you said, you know, we need additional surveys for the major thing.
No, the other survey, the Fiesta Garden, I would give you, you are definitely good enough. The same presentation that I gave to you presenting for these two spaces will be the same presentation that I give to you, to make sure that you have all the thorough information, everything that you need. Firstly, I'm sorry, I love to be transparent. I like for everyone to be on the same page about everything, especially when it comes to something so sensitive as this, you know? So, I was very aware, I was very communicative with the residents, gave them my business cards, allowed them to contact me. I also let them know that before anything, or we vote on anything, I just have to present the information first with transparency, and then we'll, you know, we'll definitely talk with them during our first, you know, procedure, or however you all would like.
And I said.
Okay.
So, fifth question maybe. So, that, that area that you showed me yesterday, what was that?
Yes, I'm happy to add some additional information here. So, there are two unbuilt roadway segments, so there's the subject item. There is probably unbuilt Fiesta Place between Gateway, Foster, and Foster and Halfway to Elmhurst. Go down Gateway a little bit. There's also either unbuilt or built, an abandoned segment of Edfield between Foster and Gateway. The segment between Foster and Gateway is the segment that is still under city ownership. The segment of Fiesta Place between Gateway, Foster, and Foster and Halfway to Elmhurst, been longer under city ownership. This, Washington, if you remind me, is about a decade ago that those four cases.
Unfortunately, I couldn't have the directory to it, however, the information is totally not.
To, to, to close out, there's a block break between 6,600 block of Gateway and 6,700 block.
Yeah.
Of Gateway. A block break is the abandoned portion, or the unbuilt portion of Edfield. If that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
So, it is approximately midway down. If you imagine that just continued.
It probably has this much space this way. So, if the road was coming down this way, and another road was coming down this way. It's like a shift. During that shift is about this much space in between, that goes about 25 feet as far as when they cut off of the 30. Right.
So that is.
Yeah. But that's part of the abandoned creek, that's not really an enclosure of the yarders. That's, they have been, no resident has been built on the abandoned lane creek part that goes up that way. That has been delineated, I guess, through real estate or their agents, but there's nothing there as far as anything that'll live it or any vacant property during that pickup. So, just to address that, so we don't think that that is also taking away additional space and maintenance. They haven't even built on it, because it's pretty much been affected creek or drive up creek.
Commissioner Goldman, if you could.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, um, for Edfield, we would offer, it's an option, right? You know?
An option is an option, yeah.
Right.
It's a good option.
It's a good option. It's a way for us to negotiate amicably with our community, right? Because for one, one reason or another, and I like to think that, you know, these things happen by accident. You live in two houses, there's a fence already there, you assume it's your property, and that's how things go, right? So, in order to be amicable to our community, we would give the opportunity for them to purchase, right? An option, but the option can also be known, right? But then, we, we need folks to work with us so that we could reclaim that land. So, I think we just want to be fair and, and offer, but obviously, you know, the answer can change, you know, and then, you know, we have to.
Yeah, and, and you're right, it happens over time. For instance, I've always said that Forestville, District Heights, Bunkhead, somewhere by our houses, and I noticed that. And one of the owners that lives in Forestville, his land looked up against the homeowner in District Heights. So, they had a conversation, he did not want, the Forestville did not want that actually. So, he offered it to District Heights owner, and they ended up purchasing it. So, you know.
We could, it just worked with our.
Yes, yeah.
This does not have to be, you know.
Yes, yeah.
And that is again, your application too.
So, we need time to kind of go through the documents, and it must like this, you can do whatever you think.
I don't know, I didn't say it was, especially your boots and your stickers.
So, so do, do the Commissioner continue on to do, it's like a filter, like, you know, because when you're reading, I'm still visually thinking about it, so let's just do a filter.
And I would be happy to thank you all. Just letting you know, we want to discuss that.
So, I didn't have any more here to just.
It's a discussion, it's a common, it's a finding.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Any more questions, Senator?
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're very welcome.
I'm afraid we can think of it, thank you. Okay, next is public participation. I've done this interview for the, for the, you know. Okay, so we have action items. Refer to the Stronghold for the PGNC 106-24, David.
Yes, thank you. Can you give me just a moment? As you know, the legislative session for 2024 kicked off earlier this month, and our lobbying team is at work flagging issues for the city to potentially take positions on, or to keep us aware of movements of state legislatures. So, on Tuesday, January 16th, our lobbyists recommended that the city take a position on PGNC 105-24 fairness in zoning. The Stronghold was conducted by email, which indicated that the commission wished to take a position, in a opposition to that proposal, and in short, that proposal is a proposal to expand standing for people to object to landing decisions, or to challenge landing decisions.
So, um, so we need to do a motion to ratify the Stronghold that you took on January 16th. So, can I get a motion?
I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that the city commission ratify Stronghold of January 16th, 2024, opposing PGNC 106-24, fairness in zoning.
Can I get a second?
Let's hear it, Howard, fourth second.
All right, thank you.
I.
Miles.
Or yes, in one now. I just forgot the clarification. Okay, the FY 2025 budget development. David Streep.
All right, thank you, Mayor Miller, vice mayor commissioners. This item is bringing back the presentation for budget guidance for the F125 budget process. I will just do a quick recap, since it's been about a few weeks since this item has been in front of you, and then lay out the options. As you recall, the commission was presented with an economic outlook, which, in short, is a less aggressive outlook than FY 23 budget number positive. Inflationary and job market trends are continuing to cool, not by much, but a slight cooling nonetheless. There is an increased chance of recession as compared to the current fiscal year, although current indicators show that that outlook is somewhat low. And the current fiscal year revenues are on track for the city. As we look ahead to the FY 25 revenue outlook, real property valuations, as determined by market sales of homes, continue to show strength, actually we improved between November, I wrote the prior report, and the end of December, when this one's drafted into January. We are still considered to be a very competitive housing market, if you look at the incorporated city itself. We average 10 to 30 days on the market before we close out, very much ahead of the rest of the country. And the estimated residential real property portfolio value is $506.25 million, which is an approximately 3% increase over the last year's valuation. The item also proposed potential FY 25 budget priorities, which we discussed in depth during the city meetings. These are capital and operating investments, as well as rightsizing service levels and benchmarking. In addition, the commission has continued opportunities to identify budget priorities as we continue to hold budget work sessions, and as you are involved in your liaison departments' budget meetings. So, in closing, the brass tacks of the commission guidance that's requested is, what real property tax scenario should the city prepare the FY 25 proposed budget at? And what range, if any, of real property tax rate should that advertise relative to the current year tax rate of .678? We call that this year, the advertising requirements changed from last year. So, as opposed to advertising over change to the constant yield, we're now required to advertise change relative to the current rate. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, though? So, many thoughtful.
So, I think I agree with Commissioner Goldman's last time, I think she says she wanted to do the three. Would you want to do the three? I guess the current with the five up, and what was it, what was the three options that you gave us, that something? Current, the five up, and I think the mid, what was it, the current rate, the rate above, and I think the rate below.
The, the connection was presented with a handful of scenarios as a starting point for conversation. So, if you go down, if you jump to page five of the item, figure eight, there are four scenarios that are conversation scenarios. The first scenario is what the estimated constant yield rate would be. So, that would be a little bit of a real property tax reduction, and likely spin off the need to have a conversation about what services we tweak to make sure that we have a safe enough buffer for the operating here. Option number three is the current tax rate, which, if real property valuations hold true, will lead to about $100,000 in new revenue derived from increasing residential real estate values. And then there's half a penny up and half a penny down from the current. Half a penny is approximately $25,000, $26,000, a full penny is $51,000, $52,000.
I, I thought that we've been really good at not only maintaining the mayor, the last permissions that we served, now we dropped it. So, there are things that we really, we're building, and it's fallen out. Took this brand new, state-of-the-art, beautiful building to this place, and now, you know, all this deferred maintenance is finally catching up with us. And our residents deserve to have a place that they can come to and do that, and be proud to bring their friends and their families, come and relax and enjoy themselves. We have a lot of programming, and I don't think it's a huge ask for half a penny up. It would be, because we are the commission that's going to spend this money, put every dime right back into this, into this building. So, that's my recommendation, is a half a penny up.
Recommend that, because it's always good to have a cushion, and you just never know.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Sure.
Mayor, so I, I agree, Vice Mayor also, you know, we're also phasing out of our opera dollars, so that's something we really need to consider on, we've been. So that's something we really need to consider on, we've been having a lot of discussions on how we're going to balance new programming of the senior center as we spend down those funds. And we know this would be a very minimal. This would be minimal to the pockets of residents. So I have to agree. So I do agree on the tax rate. I also wanted to make a comment on budget governance and something that we should consider as a commission that we sort of had conversations about the past couple of years, which is translation services for the city. We have a growing Hispanic population. We have a growing Spanish-speaking population, and we really haven't been able to provide any translated materials. And so I would really love if we could focus on building out what that plan would look like. So does that look like that we're translating evergreen materials? What do we want translated and rendered by? I think we need to flesh out how to spend some time and also allocate some resources to do that. Sure.
So, good evening. David and I have been fleshing this out, and we have, I located two people and Chris and I together located two people to assist you guys with that. We're gonna have, as we move forward this week, Chris and I will sit down and have a conversation with David on those two people so that we can decide on who we would like to run in and help you guys with that. So the way that we are working through it is having someone that can be onsite doing events, that can help translate. Then also having a help desk available to the city, where this person is available for the police department or code to call and say, can you assist us with translating this particular call? Or even the clerk's office, may please to help us, assist us with this call. So we think that that's imperative as the city moves forward and your population grows. We want to make sure that everyone feels included. And in order to make people feel included, we need to have another person in place to assist with that. And this person will also fit into our, to fit documents. As well as put Spanish documents up on your site, especially like if something is happening. The way the larger also speak to, should have some Latina, Spanish literature to assist you with this.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna ask about like written translations, because I know oral translation, and then when you're translating those documents, that's two different.
Yes.
Feel sets, so, okay.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. It's so, like I said, this particular person will work with this person, so we can get this person by his side as soon as possible. Because we also think it's imperative to have it, the only need is, and maybe have a transcript being, that's in the YouTube page to assist you. Like I said, it's about inclusion, which will be that we want to do.
And that's the, you've been working on this because when we did the, our patient did the toy giveaway, oh my God, that was odd. Because we did not realize there's so many Latina residents that could just move this city with little kids. And we had a translator there from Howard County, and if she had not been there, we would be in trouble. So it is very important to even have a group like you.
Yeah, and they were also working through ASL interpreter process, right? Four people that are able to do that and running up with the residents are very important and they're, they're, and it's so easy if they don't understand, they piss off. So human resources, Chris and I, we just want to make sure that as you guys continue moving forward, we are assisting in that process and helping provide the city with best resources. Thank you.
Have a good question, David. I'm glad you're ready.
I'm so excited to hear that you're also looking into that individual as well. As you have been having conversations with Mr. Wilson, Mr. Streep, have you been looking into an individual and being able to cover both of those? I know that, you know, you might be able to find somebody at also, we just have, I'm all about saving the city money. I'm just saying, at the end of the day, it's our taxpayers' money, so if we can find an individual that can maybe perhaps check those boxes.
Absolutely, and we totally understand the budget and sticking to the budget. So as we're looking at people, we're also looking at the hours that you get to the city, making sure that we don't over maximize hours, maximize a few hours to where you guys are feeling supported and your residents are paying for it. We can definitely look for someone who can do both. We can expand this, but you maybe come back to this next week, it's not a problem. And just see if we can find someone that can do both. But it does come down to the hazards.
Consideration is not necessarily can we absorb the cost this year, because we can't. It's can we absorb the cost on an ongoing basis if we set that as the bar? Right. And, you know, they've been working through different permutations of how those costs and things like that, and providing inside and rigor to it. But they're expensive services, particularly if we're looking at on demand. And so that is something we need to bring forward for the budget process. We might be able to kickstart this year, but we will have to come back, like you said, and have a conversation about exactly what might we put that out to, because we don't want to get ourselves into a position where we pull that out and then have to equally scale it back. But then that will be a question of now you're. So we need to set the, pretty far as the starting.
And then will that be set up in the, in the federal government? We have it where if you want, if you need accommodation, you get, you call me by certain.
And that's a, that's a very valid distinction, right? And so there's a, you know, for federal, where's the distinction in how, or a difference in how you treat somebody calling or requesting an accommodation versus what you just do, do off the shelf?
So we'll come back with that better defined, formal discussion, so we can outline that. You're welcome.
I'm here to answer your questions.
Any other questions? Are you ready for the motion?
So first motion talks about the direct, the city mentioned, prepare the FY 2025 proposed budget at the in recent, half a penny.
I can still say current, current rate.
Yeah, there's, there's two, let me, that's a good opportunity for me to go back and reach.
Okay.
So the, the motion to begin with is where you want me to assemble the proposed budget. The second part of the motion is, do you want legal up or down? And so that will influence how much up or down or how much range we advertise so that our legal bases are covered. And then during the budget process, the commission can make decisions about actually going up or down from the proposed budget itself and not run into additional advertising issues.
Maybe we want to consider a range. Yeah, maybe we want to consider a range just to give us some options. Because we, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm hearing Commissioner Tillman is voicing that he prefers the current rate. Commissioner Jennifer, do you have any comments on the tax rate? I'm just trying to.
Yes, I do. I am actually in agreement with Commissioner Tillman that we should keep it at the current rate. There are a lot of residents out there that are struggling with the current rate. Because, you know, we have a combined city or district highest tax along with French Georgia's county tax. And I'm finding that a lot of seniors are really having some, some difficulty in just being able to pay what they have right now.
So. Any other comments?
I, I do. So we have to, I know it's hard and everybody is tightening up their belts. City is impacted by inflation, just like we are as individuals. All our services that we have to pay for are also impacted by inflation, which is sitting around like about 4%, now. So we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And so for us to be able to do the things and continue a steady level of service, we can keep it at the current rate. But if the inflation rate is 4%, we don't know what's going to happen with the current geopolitical things going on now. If we do get a recession, inflation may spike, we don't know what the Fed's going to do and how this is going to affect it. So our goods and services that we offer the city are going to go up, and then we're going to be caught in a situation at the same level of money. A dollar today is worth more now than it is tomorrow. So that dollar that we have today is going to have far less spending power tomorrow. And as a tentative, when we're getting, rolling up these services, we are giving a resident services that they not have. And we want to expand services. You just said that, Chief Commissioner Jennifer, you want an ASL and a Spanish interpreter. Come on, these are expensive services, and they're going to go up next year. Everything's going to go up, and I think people understand that. I have built in the fact that when I bought a house, I've built in that my income had to keep up to maintain my housing. I don't think that a half a penny up is a big ask, that is actually, it's not going in our pockets. We're re-investing every dime back into the city. This building, we have leaks, we have upgrades that we need to do, and these are things that we need to do. And we suffer, this entire city is impacted by deferred maintenance from our roads to our sidewalks. We have things that we need to do, and we can't maintain and do those things and your extra services if we don't move. So, you know, I understand the struggles of people. I'm not asking for a dollar of assessed $100. We're asking for a half a penny, which, when we look at it, so if I get right back, that may be additionally $3. So I can cut on a couple, couple of dollars at work and come up with that money to invest in my community. So we have to, we have to change what we, how we look at what the taxes are. The taxes are going to directly benefit our community in so many ways, in, in good ways. Knowing on this commission, if this present commission is in the business of taking white dollars from these residents, everything that we've gotten since this commission's been together has been poured right back into this city. Our other ones are done. When that meeting is done, we're gonna have to figure out what to do. And so do we cut services? Do we give people these great events and all of these things that we have now? Other municipalities are modeling off of us. They're copying what we're doing. And so now we have created a leadership role in what municipal government should look like, and we're gonna do that over a half a penny. I mean, it's half a penny. And that's just not, I mean, we, we, I'm serious now, I'm actually, because this is serious. This is serious. We, how much is that? I had an earworm husband in a, in a jail. We're putting $200,000 of new bail bonds, and this is still. It's half a penny. We have to do these things. This is not, this is not us being greedy. I've never seen a Democrat that, we lowered the tax rate, I think, three times in a row. That's 2020, three times we lowered it. We didn't hope that we lowered it. And now the deal's coming to do, we want to do things, we want, again, we want people to be proud to say they live in this town. And we want to be proud that we bring people here. It does not make sense for us to put all that money in that building over there, and then this building fall apart. It, it just doesn't make sense. My position is a half a penny, and, you know, it's not easy voting. But that's, that's my argument, because we have, we can't continue to, to have maintenance of this place fall apart and then the rest of the city, when people have expectations now of a better product, and we can't get it to them, because now we're going to say, oh, we, we tightened our goal on a half a penny.
Thank you, thank you, Lex Mayor. I would also add that I'm looking for, in the memo that we presented, David, the county has a higher tax yield rate than us, right? So we're far below what the county has been charging, or taxing those who do not live in the municipality or in a municipality in the county. So I think that we have been very attentive and sensitive to making sure that we're not increasing taxes at a high rate over the past couple of years. But we do have things that we want to get done, and those things do cost money. One penny or $200. I actually, I think I would be interested in seeing an example of what that would actually look like. David, is that possible? Because I think.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yes, sure.
So when you're talking about one thing, you're looking at, are you looking at a scenario that shows what a one penny impact would be on the coordinate? Or do you want to see what a one penny impact would be on the average tax bill?
Yes, I would, I would like to see what the, that would be of the average tax bill. So if we had an example, a house that, because also our tax assessments are way below the market rate. So when I get my tax assessment, my house is assessed at about like $260,000. We know on the market, it's going to be for at least $20,000 more than that. But yes, I would like, I would be interested in seeing, in that example, $260,000. What it's now, what that tax bill will be now, and if we increase it a half penny up, what would the, yeah, so we can see real dollars.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. We'll have to make some basic assumptions with that evaluation, but I'll lay them out for you. Do you want that directly from the, or do you want me to bring that back to the meeting for discussion?
I would, I would like for you, I would like to see it back in the meeting, because I think it's important for our residents. Because we're talking about dollars that ultimately they would be spending, right? On the last bus, you know, we're, exactly. So, but it would be good for everyone to see that when we're talking about a half a penny, it's really a very small increase. Not only does it stay together.
Okay, so I can, I can certainly pull that together. I can use both, using some data that's available from accounting, so the city assessment data. And I will also bring in some assumptions about where our real estate market is relative to everybody else. I will note two additional things. I am expecting that the state that we're about, we think our portfolio is. And I just want to offer a reminder that the state uses a three-year reassessment.
Yeah.
And, and so what I will do is go back to that and ensure that I think is going to happen, that this coming year is our year. Hopefully from that, in that, we didn't, as well.
And even, because there is a stock in the market. This is actually a good topic, because since that review assessment comes up, then our assessments are generally higher valued anyways historically. So there is going to be some stock coming from the state and from the county. I think once the state loves what's spinning, because inflation is not going to stop. So we have to deal in by inflationary pressure. That the city has to incur. Uh, that the city has to incur, people on sidewalks, we, we need to stay out. We got to pay that.
So, if it's the commission's, uh, desire, I can sort of bring that back and have it ready for discussion at the February first meeting.
But that's still to be able to have it happen.
Yes. So, we're well, we're well within the bounds of any kind of, any, any kind of, um, issues with respect to it. It might, depending on how much longer we want to dive into it, it might push back the proposed date. But that's also, we have room in the schedule to.
I think, um, we're with other areas, the senior center is the services. We give away, um, the, um, hot wheels. So, the county started July of a lunch meal. But we're working on something now to go up until July. So, we always want to provide something for the seniors when it comes to food or any other type of resources that we have to raise. We're definitely focusing on that. So, it's not like we're taking anything away. We'll be complimenting what it is that they need to go through these hardships with everything that's going on. So, so we're always thinking about that. Okay. So, is there, this is a motion to go to February thirteen work session. So, so David, you clarify what you're going to come back with. So, could I get a motion to afford the FY twenty twenty five budget guidance item to the February thirteen twenty twenty four work session?
I have Commissioner Vogel to move the city commission forward the FY twenty five budget guidance item to the February thirteen twenty twenty four work session. Could I get a second?
I have Commissioner Janz to send the motion.
Okay. Thank you for that, David. So, next we have the senior center of programming. Dr. Pope.
You give me a moment. I'm going to dial her in. But I will provide some company remarks if it is already with the commission to sort of set the stage for where we left the discussion, the work that staff has done today and what we are coming back with. All right. So, what you have in front of you is an item that was presented, um, at the first or the January city meeting. It has been updated twice. Uh, one for our session that was canceled due to weather. And the second due to, second for this meeting because staff completed some additional work. So, I'm going to start from the updates with this meeting and move backwards in time. So, the update for this meeting is we are ready to release a brief survey specific to some of the services for the senior center. As you recall, the commission asked us to determine or do a little bit of legwork to determine demand as there's some interest in providing those services as a part of the program that operates for the senior center. So, we do have a brief survey put together that's ready to launch this week. There are a couple of sample questions included on the first page of the item, just to give you a sense of what we are asking. And so, what the questions are designed to do is really hone in on who is our, who is our targeted user for these services? And with what frequency do we think they would use them? What we wanted to do is make sure that we do bring in these services, that they are scheduled appropriately. So, that we're not under scheduling, you know? This is something that we will, of course, promote through our usual channels and report results back on so that the commission can make a decision. Moving a little further back in time, what we prepared for the last work session is follow-up on commission requests. And so, starting on page two of the item, we summarize a number of commission requests and provide more detailed responses than what we had ready to go at the first or at the January city meeting. And so, I'm happy to run through those briefly if you want, or I can, Dr. Pope and I can take questions about them if you wish, before I continue with the summary.
So, Commissioner. You want to continue?
I'll continue. What you've got in the next section is the same programmatic information that you received in the first item. The new information that is being provided is the first time that the commission is getting to look at a draft motion for each of the programs as well as what we're internally referring to as Kickstarter appropriations. So that we can stand up the programs before either other funding or volunteer groups take them. As well as next steps for each of the potential programs. Um, I would highlight what I said at the first meeting in that you are not under any kind of time commitment to make decisions about these programs. You can keep them in work session for as long as you need to and you're comfortable with for the programming itself. So, this is an exercise in ensuring that the commission has, and that the community gets the best information possible. So that when we do open, we do stand up these programs, everyone has confidence and understands how they were created. And so, with that, I do have Dr. Pope on the line and I, of course, available to answer any questions that you might have. So.
So, we have the survey. So, she's going to talk more about the survey. And then we said, then we will look at both programming dates, launch dates. And that we will move that to another work session. So, basically, Dr. Pope, will she just add there for questions?
We're, we're ready for questions.
Oh, ready. Okay. Any questions? Sure. I'm not sure Pope to me will probably be able to answer this question, but where are we in terms of the opening of the senior center?
We're waiting on the engineering firm to give us final sign-off for our temporary occupancy.
Uh, any other questions?
Yes, just a comment. So, I see that we have added some, um, better and specific programming here. Um, so, yeah. Never mind.
I have a good question. So, in regards, I guess this needs, needs to run options. Have we reached out to like businesses that are in the city? We should have the city, they can kind of like, you know, offer their services as well. But now we have small businesses here in the city that need small services. So, is there, we can kind of get expanded, reach each of them as well?
We, we could, but we're not at the vendor selection process yet.
Okay, okay. But I understand when you get to that selection, is that a kind of consideration?
So, we look at our margins and how small businesses, we try to get individuals that are trying to give back to the community. When we get to that point. Also, I wanted to make sure that we needed this survey. We have been on February the fourteenth Valentine's Day. I want to make sure that that survey is there. We have a mask of people to be engaged. So.
We can certainly accommodate that.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I do. Uh, I am excited to see, um, the aging and place pilot for twenty twenty five. Uh, where we are talking about accessory zoning units. Uh, and so I think it's, it's probably good for us to maybe reach out to NML or some other, and not some places in Virginia have done it, uh, to start working on some work pieces for the city. So that we can have those in place well before.
We could, we can certainly look. And it is something that Dr. Pope has been monitoring, particularly, as you know, the discussion at the state level has started to become more serious. The limitation that we are under is that we don't have land use authority. And so, there's a very small subset that, of things we can do in the ADU area.
And that will also fall under that zoning regulations through. That's one of the reasons why I didn't want to go on the language. Again, we would have been in the same situation as we are now with that current, you know, we have no say over the zoning of businesses on our main street. Because they totally cut municipalities and our businesses out. And so, we would still be held hostage by the county. Who are like any forty-four, seventy, six, fifteen, one there everywhere. Uh, and so, that's one of the main reasons why I did not agree to that, that let's go. And so, we can, we can take back this one. We should have authority to do these things. So, we can't have these types of programs. Uh, our seniors in their homes and generate income so that they can stay and not lose their homes because of taxes. They can generate revenue.
Dr. Pope, did you want to respond to that as well?
Just give me a short, I couldn't hear that actually, what you requested.
He was speaking specifically about the ADU program, the, the ADU discussions that's occurring at the state level.
Yes, um, I have been, you were actually just mentioning, we both have been very focused on that particular process. And based on experience that I've had in Northern Virginia as well as Washington DC, the critical aspect is to be able to make sure it's feasible for individuals that are seniors and they can be able to build these ADs and grant classes and, and be at a low pay, like a low, low rate to be able to accommodate payments for the actual addition. So, legislation around that, Prince George's County is starting to be a little bit more flexible. This leads to this process because of the other, um, I would say the DC and Virginia. So, we don't see that. There will be some, they quickly in Prince George's County. We're doing some of the work with the ADUs. So, we don't see some changes in twenty twenty four.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a quick comment. Oh.
Thank you. Um, I'm just looking at the future program considerations for FY twenty five. So, we have the transportation loop program here. Um, and it says that we have a grant request. Is that, have we put that grant through yet?
No, that, that grant is from a private organization. Actually, I wrote up a letter of intent, um, for the, for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be able to accommodate the programming, some of the programming needs, especially the ones that focus on transportation in twenty twenty five. So, we have that heard back from the Enterprise Community Partners, that was the name of the organization. We'll get here from them sometime in February.
Are, so, um, have we been collaborating with our grant record that we have through, um, LA press for that one?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm really excited about the transportation loop, um, not only for our seniors and I'm just in for the chance of residence. But I'm having conversations also maybe including commuters who are taking the metro. I mean, we're in such close proximity to three metro stops. And, and when we want to talk about what value that is, I mean, to moving into the city and what your taxpayer dollars could possibly get you, that would be a great benefit, um, to add for all of our residents. Especially as we have to, for me, the call of us that we had a few years ago. This would be a great opportunity to reintroduce some transportation services back to the community.
Any other questions?
What, one quick comment. So, this is kind of the reason why I support PG one oh six two four is that I did reach out to the delegate that sponsored the building and it gave me some pros and some cons. And one of the pros, as she said, was that it is a greater ability for citizen input and feedback to be reflected in development process. And she also said it has flexibility in zoning and you can have several changes, including possibility for us. So, that was one of the reasons why I supported the building because she said that we get more input and things that we have to say and do. And that was pretty much from the, it's been sponsored with him. That's why I supported it. So that, so what was said was, was incorrect.
What was said is different than what I put in the language that's written.
Right. The language is different.
Language does not say that. I understand you believe it did not say that.
I was telling you, I was so willing to stay with you.
Change you sharing it, but you reading something. They're going to go by what's written.
I did have a question. Um, and just though I wanted to clarify, we all know what ADUs are. ADUs are like tiny homes. They're, they're home accessory, um, zoning units. You can either connect them to your house or you can step them on your property. If you have enough space, uh, you can step them on a space. What's happening is a lot of seniors want to age in their home. They don't want to go to a senior home. Uh, and as when you retire, your income generally drops dramatically in those years. However, everything else around you still goes. I've heard a story about a woman in Detroit. She lost her home over taxes and one of these people over taxes like fifteen or twelve dollars, right? Because what she didn't understand was the brains and all that. Her house sold, I think for almost four hundred thousand dollars. She didn't even get, they didn't get her money. So, which is crazy. They took their tax and then they sold them as well, which is horrible. So, what these ADUs do is allow seniors, they don't need, they can't manage an entire home. They would either move their families down the street, that's where we do the property, we could sell it instead, like we did with our rentals. You could rent your house down if it's family members. So, I, I'm thinking about, I, the way, the example that I have to make emotionally, I would allow the opportunity to build an ADU and put my mom there. Or I could go to ADU and she didn't stay in the house. This is a, I just can't live in the house with her. I love her. But it would be nice, you know, I'm a grown man. It would be nice for me to have my own space. But it'd be nice for me to just go through the door and say, which she cooked today, you know? So, and it's still that funny. It's, it's a way where her income could go a lot further if she's with me. She would have her income. I would have mine, but I can always check with her. And so, even if the instance comes with a flex, this mom's in her eighties and we all get to that transition. I'd be able to maybe bring my niece into the house and the cycle can continue. I can eat the value of that property. That wealth can stay, generational wealth can stay in my family. So, then I could move into the ADU and my niece can take that house and I can start that house company. And then I have somebody because I'm a family kid and she's going to look after it. And so, this is a, a really good point for us to use our property in a way. When we look at generational wealth among black people, this, when you buy a house, it's generally anyone. So, her disinvestment, that's all there is. But it's particularly the largest investment for black people. But we also have the highest instances and rates of losing our homes because we can't keep up with taxes. And so, this is, I took it before, I spent these ADUs on our properties so that we can generate some additional income. So that at least we can keep up with the, the increases in taxes at most times. And we can use the property. A lot of people have huge racks, like ten years, they have tiny racks. I could put one of those things in my house, easy, right there by the RV, you know, our RV. Same concept, it's just like a nice mobile home. And so, these are things that we have to get zoning. And unfortunately, and I'll just say this because I live here, county is not as creative as municipalities can be. Municipalities are innovators for new ideas and creativity. We can move, we're much more flexible and agile. We can move a lot quicker. But, but again, we're a little hostage because we. But, but again, we're being a hostage because we're ready to go ahead and move forth with something that can protect our residents. But we can't because the county has us by the throat. We can't control our main street because the county has us by the throat. The way, the look and feel of our community, who we are, is not indicative when you ride in a Marlboro pipe. Because the county does not live here. They have no idea what our aspirations are, what our hopes are and who we really are. We have, if we could do that, just you all sitting up there, imagine what Marlboro might look like. You know, they got like
Yeah, because we only have one municipality that has their own zoning rights and that's Marlboro. Everybody loves to shop on Marlboro. So we want to be like Marlboro. So, um, thanks for that.
So, you know, that was great. But like passion, but you know, um, that's why I kind of support the current tax rate. Because my mom doesn't have the extra money. And you know, people like my mom, you know, I met a neighbor during the snow time and she was talking to me, she had to decide she had to, you know, get money to supply her plumbing that they cut off during the snowstorm. So you know, that type of reason is why I'm supporting the current tax rate because we don't have the extra money. My mom, you know, she depends on her social security. So that extra dollar or penny, she does not have it. And most of us, no, she, we, we live in the apartment. So you know, we're one paycheck away from getting one of those sometimes. So you know, that extra dollar or two is helpful for people like my neighbors who live in the apartment. Because we, we need that extra money. So that's why I support that tax rate because I, I talk to people who live in the houses that can't even afford to get that, that accidental issue to have, you know, that, that her, her water cut off during the snowstorm. And she didn't even have money to pay for the plumber. So those accidental incidents is why I support the current tax rate because we, we, there's some people that don't have the extra money and we should provide that, that issue with them to have another issue.
But the reality, the reality is if you are, if you can afford, if you're in a home and you can afford the maintenance and all the things that go with that, then one penny would mean you would lose your home. You should not be a homeowner. Well, we should not be a homeowner. And losing it is one penny.
Well, that government shutdown and a lot of people got a job. And those people made way above pay grade and they still was at the shopping store getting their food. That was free.
So, thank you both for this input, but we need to move because we have other agenda items. Um, so are there any other questions? Um, it's for Dr. Paul for David. Are we going to leave the rest of the items for the next work session? Because I think we did, I think I thought about it. Discussion on senior program. To the next work session.
Vice President, how important to move the discussion on senior programming to the next work session?
I think, okay.
February thirteenth.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Thomas second.
All in favor? But the survey will be available.
Watching this week.
This week, okay.
Well, then it will be available.
It will primarily be available online.
And then maybe we have copies. We have Black History Month event and then we have the senior about that day.
What we'll do is put together a coverage plan for those two events.
Okay.
And let everybody know what the coverage.
All right, moving on. Thank you, Dr. Paul. She already on? Next, we have the fencing regulations. It's still waiting. Edits from the city attorney. So we should be ready February first.
So, so the stage that we are at, you sometimes that will matter. We have taken the feedback that you provided when the item was presented in December. Um, there were a couple of items that you flagged for legal review. Um, those have undergone legal review and actually the city attorney is drafting ordinance that enacts um, the, the different fencing provisions that you spoke to. So you found a way to work it into an ordinance and so we're planning to bring the ordinance back for introduction on February first. So there are no substantive updates to what you discussed previously, other than to say we were able to accommodate them.
So could I get a motion? To move the fencing regulations to the February first. Okay.
I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that we move the issue on the fencing ordinance to the work session scheduled for February the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
February first. Is it the second?
It's the, it's the city meeting, the first.
Oh, first.
Yes.
Um, I, Commissioner Jennifer, that we, the fencing ordinance to the city meeting scheduled for February first, twenty twenty-four.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Thomas second.
All in favor? So next we have personnel manual update. Um, so is it something that you want to discuss now?
Yeah, Mayor, say a very short report on that thing. Update on lead and dress code and Ms. Ponce was pretty much done in a short. So.
Okay.
Just finish that out.
Again, I will be brief. There are some questions. Um, as you look at your packets, what we did was we updated the language on the lead policy. Current language was pretty vague. So we would like to update it and better outline, um, putting in, you know, the two weeks notice for vacation and how we want to continue as we move forward to make sure that we're very clear, um, that we need department heads to make sure that they're getting this notice earlier than we. So I, we felt like if we update this language and outline it a little bit better, that maybe we can continue to move forward and make sure that this is happening. If the two weeks have gone in and employees and staff are letting their department heads know. So we would just like to ask if we could, because the general and plus what's there right now is just really there.
Is there any, I'm very much in work that deals with emergencies in the league?
Yes, so emergency league is actually outlined with different chapters.
Is that okay?
Yes, but yes, we can look at it and make sure that it's Yeah, so.
So. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the attachments and I'm looking at the motion, so. Sure.
Ms. Ponce, um, um, in full report, this is similar with the federal government as well. But how are employees going to be informed? Managers want to be sitting their staff down and having the conversation or how, how is that going to work?
Well, I'll do it the way that I've always done. Every time we make an update, I go to each department and I have to answer questions with staff. As long as the department. So, um, once we get all this done tomorrow, then I will be going to the manager's line and I acknowledge that they sign, that they receive the updated back. And then I always answer any questions that they have. It's the department's first and I'm going to the staff just to make sure that it's good.
And then you have updated dress code.
Yes, so a couple of people, we have, we've spoken about the flyer. I want to update it further with the events back. Dave and I have been going over this extensively, making sure that the events back, everyone looks the same. And that maybe everyone should have the same color on, you know, same, just look the same so that when residents come out, we can stay noticed. And we want to make sure that we're keeping the same status. So we want to make sure that no matter who's covering it, residents, we, we, particularly, that everyone looks the same. So I did add that and then I added another little chart. Not appropriate, off, off of the time because we have reverted back. We thought that Dave is not, we had had some staff, we have reverted back a little bit as we keep raising the bar. I just want to keep driving at home that we want to make sure that we're always office appropriate anyway.
Sure. Yeah, I don't see, I know we have language in the government that when you're at work, you you must wear your, your ID.
Yes.
Uh, but I don't see that on the chair. And because I think again, um, when Dr. Newell was here, I just thought about that, how people knock on your door and they say there's somebody and you don't know who they are. But if you tell them, perhaps one we must we can have other set.
If I we, we do have a policy for that.
Okay.
We are in the process of transitioning to new tags. And so that rollout, you can talk about that rollout, but we do have a, you shall have your your ID badge is a void at all times. We just have to be in transition.
Yes.
That's the twenty twenty-four month. We are rolling.
I still look at it, they're looking out. So we wanted to make sure that you guys can see that. But yes, so what Dave is saying, we do have policies that, and what we're going to do, what I think we should do, and I was going to speak to Dave about this, is have people sign on acknowledging the fact that they know that they're supposed to have their badges on. Their is guilty. They should be identified. Not only by the way they're dressed and have a polo shirt, but they should still have a bad, their badge.
But I love killing them.
It also secure.
It's absolutely.
Yeah, and I was thinking about what about committees, you know, like we need to see if they're really committed.
We have three, three categories of badges in this.
Okay. Yes.
Something I have to weigh in, mind me, we have three categories of badges so that everybody knows. So we have, we have a category for employees, a category for contract service provider partners, and we also have a category for volunteers. We follow which of our committees is going to fall into.
Yes. So as we should think to roll out our process on the badges, the committees, they will receive theirs. So, and everyone, it's a different color. I think it's important, you guys, you they do put this back, they visitors, I think. So we kind of selected the committee that put the focus on what we're calling this.
He says that outside, right?
Yes, right in.
I'm stating.
Yes.
So we, um, so the commission had a chance to look at the updated language and all the other attachments. And so could I get a motion? To adopt these. On the first page. Want to hear the actual minimal part?
Um, is that right? Yeah.
Exactly.
Um, I, Commissioner Jennifer, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I commend Commissioner Jennifer to approve the personnel man, man, manual updates to you know, as presented in attachments. One, two, and three of action item three, personnel name updates.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Thomas second.
All in favor?
I.
Welcome, Ashes, boys, zero. Okay. Next, so Jennifer. So, yeah, so could I get a?
I can give a motion to go to the conference.
I know I said that. We go into both of our staff. The time is nine twenty-eight.
Could I get a second?
Can I show you my second?
All in favor? We can prepare for a little session.
Are we done?
Are we going to do a press? Stay here.
Uh, it's the mission, pleasure, I guess we can stay here. We can go.
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to make sure we got some. Let's party today.
Yeah.
Yes. It was very cagey to work. It was a surprise party. It was, it really.
Thank you.
You know, I don't play, I have to be, but I still have my flexible five year financial daddy. It's not like but it's just
I can't.
Yeah, I'm not working. We're just working out. Well, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. You mean? You mean?
Here's what they said. Here was entirely. All the station that before. When people, then where, when it was, thanks for. Was a better. And he found us, and like, we are attached, we didn't.
We're sick. Yeah. Yeah. They didn't, and they put them in, it took them long. They didn't just. Trying to. Sure. But I'll work something out. It's on, it's, it's on, I know. It's almost these things can be, and I'm not alone with this. Yeah. I know, and I appreciate, I appreciate everything you tell me. I park now. But we can see on the door open, is this one? Should I open? I guess not in the restroom. But anyway, good to see you. And, um, you do the same, I'll be talking.
Is for the guy, the owner, hold up.
Yeah, yeah.
If the two bags you talk about, actually about them, in the creek.
So, they paid for it, they want, yeah. So they want it.
Cause there's no way to go. You can't come out and foster, there's a.
No, believe him, the two thousand years, the market that, technically, before they went to Florida, we obtained that. Now the fire, now the property next to this, like, the garden is on now. And we want, I'm totally gone to town. And it cuts trees when I have some trees, because I want to fall in the net. And, and he said, that was, and I said, okay, well, fine. But we're not going to, and I said, well, they said, well, we did. So maybe I'll get something. Cause it's not very good.
Just all, all that stuff is probably made for us.
Yep, and this asphalt right up on the hill.
Oh, yeah.
It goes all the way back to, um, and that's one of the farms too. Because we want to put a water filtration system there. But I'm building my initial, what's leaking, the chemicals. Into the water, air.
Did they do?
Yeah.
Did they do one month?
Um, I don't know, maybe a couple of times. It's been so, yeah. I wanted to make sure that. Yeah. Paint tomorrow, I wanted to make sure. What was under that? Well, since I've been here, the grass has been home, which is covered.
Well, they backfill.
Yeah.
The city put dirt on, they shouldn't have put it off.
Just I thought it was just.
Yeah, they just did it, the city, they just did it.
You're in that town? He can't. So because something is more, it's treated, or dropping, then we're, every, and most of the day, they're all just dying. So now this, several, the, the, the deer have been broken. Against the, um, every, they said, but it's just that they, um, trees are not, it's. It's saying, and you probably. Yes, but. I can only put in the word.
She have a tree.
They had a tree. No, trees, almost fell down.
They shit several hours.
The tree, the tree fell down. Um, I mean, when the tree wasn't big. It wasn't bad.
Oh, yeah.
What happened? God, he said, this is our, we want, we want, we know, I mean, it's not, they, they. Now you're going, now you're going change the. And what it has, it was, it's not without you. The water started to run, and it made a panel all the way down to my. So before they did that whole happy life, where the tree started, no, don't, please don't. You know, you don't know, the flow of the water is gonna be different, we gonna, we have, we need. So what did that prepare her with? That's one and all, it's one. Yeah, 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 I won't forget your name. No, because you, the first time I made. And you, and that was the same firm nation that you came from. It broke. Yeah.
Now, what's gonna take about, say. Hey, you're going to me, why don't you say, why don't you say, why don't you go? Why don't you call it in, and then I'll call it in too? You know, I guess it makes more sense when you're multiple. Just get.
I was a. Um, that's really one of those. But that's a whole different.
Yes.
Being there, maybe learn the facts, and also when you want to work. What way, and what. And coming.
Social skills.
You find out there from bottom. That though baggage, if you have been there all time, from the three years of the trade, for being, for your own voice. You know, the thing is, the thing is still, it's still a tale.
Well, yeah. They see different, they see. The, the change is, is, was.
Change was dramatic.
Yes, I mean, we can't, we can't put in the words. It's like walking outside in the rain right now, you get to the rims, and it's a hundred degrees, no rain. Just that quick, it changed, but residents are still. Scary.
Yeah.
No, no.
But something started happening.
What did you think?
No, we don't know, just.
The crazy. Then it, it's here. We know, we know the fight was nineteen eighty years. Twenty, we know. We've been here, we know. And we've been in the rings. Then, you know, so, uh, I mean, you can, you can take one, you can take one more spot. It's not exclusive to me, you can.
We here, we that. We got rid of some people that needed golf, so that we could do. That's all I'm saying. Cause they were, okay, we came with the, yeah, but I'm not saying that. Okay, they know what it's like. Okay, so your feet on the ground, you weren't that bad. There was, there was like, you had to, you had to step back sometimes, but.